All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Happy Friday. I'd like to call to order this study session of the, on the San Jose-Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility on the morning of January 31st. Tony, would you please call the role?
Kamai.
Here.
Campos.
Here.
Cohen. Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dawn.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mayhan.
Here.
Yevakorm.
Great, thank you. Well, just as we transition to the staff report, as we were, I was thinking about Councilor Cohen's point when we were looking at the annual city services report, and I thought he astutely pointed out that we have a lot of city services that we don't focus on in that discussion because while they may be essential, they're really well-managed and they're not an immediate pain point for folks. And I think our wastewater treatment facility, much like our airport, is one of those critical city functions, you could argue one of the most essential. I think civilization would disappear pretty quickly without sanitation. So we're all very grateful to the team there. But it's one of those facilities that we don't discuss as frequently as council, in part because it's so well-run and it's just this, this critical foundational service that we almost take for granted. But we know a lot of critical work is being done there. Our city truly couldn't work without it. And there are new, new laws coming down that we need to comply with. There are big capital investments we're making. I've had the privilege of having a tour of the site, which I recommend to all of my colleagues. And so today, we're going to get a kind of primer on all things happening up at the wastewater facility, which is, if I'm not mistaken, is the largest west of the Mississippi. Is that, is that correct? One of the largest? Go ahead, correct me.
It's one of the largest. We just lost to the Sacramento one.
You're kidding me. I have to strike that from my talking points. Plenty of other things to brag about in San Jose. We still have the, we still have the best wastewater treatment facility. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to the team to give us a presentation. We will then open it up to council questions, discussion, and then we will close with public comment. Please feel free to jump in.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Lori Mitchell. I'm the acting ESD director and very excited to present this study session today. I'll go to the next slide. So, really excited today to have a big team with us. So I'll start with Mariana. She is our general manager out at the wastewater treatment plant. So she'll walk us through a lot of what's going on out there. And then Capil is our deputy director over the capital program. Really great to have him here today and to talk about all the projects that we've completed out there and what's on the way. And then Eric is our deputy director over regulatory and compliance, and he'll talk a little bit about the new regulations that are facing the plant. And then also, very excited to have Kevin Ice, who's an assistant to the city manager, working on a lot of the real estate and land use issues out at the plant. So it'll be a very comprehensive discussion today. And of course, I'm Lori Mitchell. And then I'm joined by Jeff, who is our assistant director in ESD. Okay, next slide. No problem. No problem. We'll give it some time. It's waking up, too. Okay, so this is just an overview of what we'll cover today. So first, we'll just talk a little bit about the history of the regional wastewater plant and its purpose. We'll talk about the capital improvement program and what we've completed over the last 10 years, which is pretty exciting. We'll also talk a little bit about the regulatory changes that are in front of us and some of the new nutrient limits that have been regulated and imposed upon us and what that means for our capital program. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about the technical update to the plant master plan, next steps for our capital improvement program, and highlighting some of the work that we're going to need to do there. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about the land use and the other major projects that are going on in the region. So I hope you're excited for this. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mariana.
The objectives of this council study session. So we want to provide you some background. We have a lot of new members in council and they are not as familiar with our program. So we want to kind of just go through the inception of the capital program, what have we, what we have been doing for the last 10 years. Some of the accomplishment that we have achieved in these last 10 years, we are like now a very well-established program. So we want to talk a little bit about that. And also, we want to inform you and share some of the challenges and changes that are happening and how that will impact the future of CIP. With that, we want to open this study session with a video that we prepare that will give you a little bit of an overview. Regional wastewater facility has been working since 1956, protecting the health and environment of San Jose and all our tributary agencies, including the cities of Santa Clara, Los Gatos, Cupertino, Milpitas. The regional wastewater facility has a discharge permit that we have to comply with. And we basically take sewage that is coming from all our cities and treat it to a high level of treatment. We are one of the few tertiary treatment plants in the West Region.
The capital improvement program is a multi-billion, multi-decade-long program intended to upgrade, renovate, and modernize the regional wastewater facility. We've been delivering the capital improvement program for over a decade now. We've accomplished a lot. We've learned a lot. We've come a long way. We've delivered multiple projects, and we have grown substantially as a group and as a program. We've had the opportunity to also accept awards and industry recognition for multiple projects, including our cogeneration facility, as well as our new headworks facility.
The new headworks project replaced the aging, over 50-year-old original headworks out here at the RWF. Old headworks was in constant need of repair. It was a constant headache for O&amp;M staff as it was oftentimes breaking down even on weekends. So this new project replaced it with a new screening system, a new grit removal system, and a new pumping system. One of the early decisions we made in this project was to decide to go with a design-build approach for this project. The new headworks itself can treat 260 million gallons per day of wastewater. And during the wet season, we combined it with headworks number two, and we could treat up to 400 million gallons per day of sewage.
Our new digested sludge dewatering facility will be our new facility that will help transition out of our current biosolids process area that entails drying beds and open lagoons that are currently drying our digested sludge. The new dewatering facility will be housing centrifuges, and also, there will be a loadout area where the haulers will be able to come in and haul the cake solids. And then eventually, those will be disposed of for beneficial reuse. Our current process also will be reducing the time that it takes for our digested sludge to become dried cake. The current biosolids process takes over four years, and with our new digested sludge dewatering facility, that will be reduced down to within just a few hours.
So, the cogeneration facility project installed new equipment to replace aging infrastructure at the facility that's become increasingly unreliable, and it's less efficient than modern equipment. The equipment uses biogas from the digestion process, which is part of the wastewater treatment process, as a natural byproduct, and converts that into a fuel source for use in the engine generators to produce both electricity and heat for the ongoing wastewater treatment process. The cogeneration project is an award-winning $115 million project that we completed using a progressive design-build delivery method. And it provides enough electricity for the plant to continue to operate even in the loss of electrical connection from outside the facility, as it can operate in tandem with our four emergency diesel generators on-site.
We've come a long way, but we have a long way to go. We have decades of work in front of us, and we have a lot of infrastructure at the regional wastewater facility that still requires upgrade and renovation.
Great. So with that, we'll, we'll start from the beginning. So what is the history and the purpose of the RWF? Next slide. So just from, for definition, wastewater is basically any water that have, have been provided to our homes, industries, commercial environments, has been used, and then it goes to a wastewater treatment plant. In our case, San Jose has two different separate systems. So we have the sewage system sanitary, and also the storm drain system, so that the storm drain goes straight into the creeks and rivers. Storm sewage system goes to the treatment plant. Contaminants in the wastewater include many things. So among those nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus are some of the main components. Nitrogen mostly coming from human waste. And phosphorus can come from human waste, and in the past, used to come a lot from phosphates, from detergents. You also have basically anything that is flushed down. So you have physical things that get flushed down to us, debris, sand that comes into the system. And because we have mostly human waste, there is also bacteria viruses that get, get sent to us as part of the, of the human waste. So the, the RWF, what do we do? So this is, these are pictures that we like to show. The RWF has been treating wastewater since 1956. We treat over 110 million gallons per day. All that goes into the lower South San Francisco Bay daily. And what we like to show is this picture from 1956 and now. So you can see the differences. At the time, San Jose used to be mostly an agricultural area. So there were a lot of orchards. There were like the canneries. That has completely changed to what we are now, a mostly urban setup. And you can see also the, the amount of the development that has happened around the lands of the RWF. So it used to be really that there was nothing out there, and now we're basically in the middle of, of an urban area. Who do we serve? So, Regional Wastewater Facility, as the name says, is a regional facility. We serve all of the South Bay, the city of San Jose and the city of Santa Clara. And we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit. We are the co-owners of the facility. But we're basically also servicing a lot of the different communities in the South Bay. So we, we serve the city of Milpitas, the city of Santa Clara, Cupertino sanitary district, West Valley sanitation district, county sanitation district 2 and 3, and Burbank sanitary district. Next slide. Before we talk a little bit about the expansion, like I just mentioned, between all the cities that we serve, it's about 1.5 million in population and about 17,000 businesses. So it is a big facility. I mean, we, we just mentioned, we used to be the largest tertiary treatment in the west of the Mississippi. Sacramento has a larger facility now, but we are still one of the most advanced facilities in the West Coast. So we're going to talk a little bit here about the development of the facility and how that has been a result of different regulations and different drivers, right? So 1956, as we mentioned, that's the, the construction of the facility as originally. That was only primary treatment. What that, that means is that basically only major solids were taken out, and the rest of the sewage was discharged to the bay as it was. In the 60s, we are there, we added a secondary treatment, which is basically the biological treatment that is provided to, to get some of the contaminants out of the wastewater. And then in the 70s, 1979, the Clean Water Act was the big changer. So that is when we added the tertiary or advanced treatment, which basically means a filtration stage. So after having kind of mostly physical, a little bit of biological, and then a high-level filtration system, we got to basically the highest quality that you can get in a wastewater treatment plant. In 1997, there was further changes, and there was addition to a biological nutrient removal portion. This basically means that we, it's a more advanced treatment, and we can target a specific contaminant, such as nitrogen and phosphorus. And also, South Bay water recycling started. So that basically was the start of our recycling program. But this was actually a legislation requirement. The board at the time, we have limitation on the maximum amount of clean water that we can deliver to the Lower South Bay. The reason why is that it's a marshy environment. So they, they wanted to limit how much fresh water we were providing. Our cap is 120 MGD. So right now, we're around like 100 to 110. But at that time, South Bay water was started just to kind of make sure that we comply with this requirement. In 2008, the facility at that point had already been running for over 50 years. So that was the trigger to start a big planning process, to try to identify what was needed to keep the facility operational, but also any upgrades or rehab that needed to happen. So this triggered a very long and rigorous planning process for plant master planning and environmental review. So the, the process went over five years, that basically identified all the different things that we needed to do, and also completed CEQA process. And the plant master plan was finally adopted in 2013. The plan was adopted by, by both the council of San Jose and the council of Santa Clara, because they are co-owners. So 2013 kind of gave us a master plan, and then we needed to start the implementation of that plan. So just a little bit about the ownership and the governance of, of the facility. As we mentioned before, owners of the facility, San Jose mostly, like 80% of the, of the ownership, and then Santa Clara. And we have as customers, West Valley sanitation district, Milpitas, Cupertino sanitation, sanitary district, and the two smaller districts, county sanitation district 2 and 3, and Burbank. We have two different levels of approvals that we usually go to. So we have a treatment plan advisory committee that is formed by four representatives from San Jose, two of Santa Clara, and three of the tributary agencies. And then we'll come to San Jose City Council to get approval for all items related to the facility, but also if there is any items related to land use or financing, that will go also to the Santa Clara City Council. Just a little bit of the, of the capacity of the facility. As we mentioned before, we are treating around 110 MGD right now, but the rated capacity of the facility is 167 MGD. That means that that's the ultimate flow that we could treat. What we want to show you here is just what we have right now as the distribution between San Jose, Santa Clara, and the rest of the tributary agencies. As we mentioned, San Jose is about 80% of the, of the capacity. And the other tributary agencies are all based on master agreements that were established in the 80s, that they bought into the capacity for their own use. One of the things that we want to highlight is that San Jose has enough capacity for, to support any future growth. So one thing that you may have heard from other areas or municipalities is that one of the restrictions for development is that they don't have enough capacity. In our case, that's not a problem. We have enough capacity, and, and we are planning to, to conserve this capacity in the future. The next thing that we want to show is how we compare with others. So our sewer rates, and that, that is not just RWF, that also supports the collection system. We want to show you here the rates for San Jose and other agencies for 2425. As you can see from this table, from the Bay Area, we still have the lowest sewer rates. So compared to other municipalities. So this is showing just the ones nearby, Sonibel, Milpitas, some of our own tributary agencies, Palo Alto, Mountain View, Santa Clara. And we just want to share with you that that is still is within the, I mean, it's within the norm, but we are also the lowest ones in the area. A little bit of the RWF in numbers, just to get you a sense. Some of you came to the tour last Friday, so you got a, a little bit more of a sense of the sites and everything. The, the facility is operated by Environmental Services Department. We have about 326 people working at the facility. This is between all the different divisions that work there, including the operations and maintenance area that has all our operators, electricians, mechanics, so on. Our capital improvement program that Capil leads, that's the program leading our current capital program. And also, we have a fully staffed, nationally-recognized lab that takes care of all the compliance issues and all the samples that are generated at the facility. The facility is operational 24/7. So a lot of the wastewater that comes to us comes from gravity sewers, which means that basically it's flowing all the time. So that's one thing to keep in mind as we go through this session, because all the work that we do is while keeping the facility operational. We also, just to give you a sense from the lab, we collect about 25,000 samples every year, and that's what we, it takes to analyze almost 60,000 analyses based on that, just to keep the facility both in compliance and operational. We also are self-generating energy. We will talk about one of our projects, where we're basically right now generating for the bio, from the biogas that we produce, about 80% of our current energy demands. We are also the largest capital improvement program. We are also the largest capital program in the history of San Jose. So as the master plan identified, this program is over a 2.2 billion program, or it was at the time, and this is the largest capital program that the city has started. So we will share a little bit more about that. So now, just for a little bit, just of background, so we understand what we do, we have two different things that we do at the facility, what we call the liquid treatment process, and hopefully will start appearing. So we have a combination of, again, physical, chemical, biological systems that help us treat the water. So we have a pre-treatment section, what we know as our headworks, that basically takes out all the major things that are rags, some of the grit, and that's also an step to protect the rest of the equipment downstream of the facility. Then we go through the primary treatment, that basically is a little bit of a settling tank and slows down the solids. You take out some of the solids. Those solids, which is basically organics coming in the in the seawash, will go to the digester process. And then cleaner water will go from the primary treatment to what we consider secondary treatment, including the irrigation tanks and the secondary clarifiers, which are being very slow in up here. So secondary treatment is basically the biological process. So in a way, very similar to the human body or any other process that you have in nature. We have a specific bacteria here that target the contaminants present in wastewater. We keep them in an adequate time and temperatures and oxygen, and then they basically clean the water from there. From there, we will go through another step of settling, the secondary clarifiers, and then to tertiary treatment, which is basically a filtration process followed by our disinfection process. Disinfection is a merely chemical treatment process. We have two steps, one for actually disinfect and kill all bacteria and viruses, and then we have a second step to take away any residual chlorine before we send it to the bay, just to avoid toxicity for fish. Then the other thing that happens is the solids that are removed from the system, they get into a digestion system, methane is produced there. This is also a biological process. From there, it goes to our generation engines, and we get 80% of the power that we use at the facility. What is left from from that process currently is still going to a process that we're in the process of eliminating. We have these lagoons and drying beds, 750 acres, where it takes four years to process, we're in the process of changing these to a mechanical de-watering system that we will discuss a little bit too. So what has happened in all this time that we have been treating the wastewater at the facility? We, and this is courtesy of Eric, he found these pictures, these are historical pictures, and you can see the difference from 1972, how the bay looked then, and 2022. So this is like 50 years of what work in the in this RWF has done to the bay. We have basically helped increase the health of the bay and clean it significantly. And you can see that in the ecosystem that now we have at the RWF outfall area and in the Lower South Bay. There are partnerships with the Stanford where they go and check on this, but you can see the fish diversity that we have. Some of these fish are rare and endangered species, but this is on constantly, just to check how we are doing. And also, and all this is taken at the facility. All this is also all the bird species that we support in the in the Lower South Bay. One thing that I didn't mention also is that we have within the area of the RWF, an area dedicated to burrowing owls, which is also an endangered species in California, and that is also part of of the plant lands. So what happened then? So we go from the master plan to where we are today. So we want to kind of walk you a little bit of the process that has been happening in the last 10 years. So the plant master plan was, as we mentioned, a very involved process. It took almost five years of public consultation, environmental review, and analysis of technical options. The plan was was adopted by the city of Santa Clara, the city of San Jose councils in 2013. And this basically, this gave us a number of treatment improvements and capital upgrades that were supposed to happen until 2040. There were two major components, a technical component, which basically tells us all the things that we needed to do within the RWF operational area, but also a land use portion that gave us all the proposed mix of land uses and use for the buffer lands, and basically the roadmap for how these lands would be developed. The master plan was basically developed following a few goals, operational, economical, environmental, and social goals. Obviously, operational, they wanted to have a facility that was reliable and flexible, so we could basically just respond to any changes that we would have. Economical, they wanted to maximize economic benefits, but also being cost-effective. In terms of the environmental, obviously continue the work that we have been doing, improve the habitat and minimize impacts, and then maximize community benefits for the social portion. Some of the things that were the drivers was obviously the critical condition of some of the infrastructure that we have. Some of the regulatory requirements, and this is one of the things that we're going to be talking about, those regulatory requirements is whatever was in place in 20, between 28 and 2013. Some of those have changed. And again, just improved performance benefits, policy decisions at the time, but that gave us basically a plan to follow. And that plan was a number of different purposes. So one of the things obviously was having a planning horizon for the capital program, and that was supposed to be from 2010 to 2040. One of the things that we're going to discuss today is that that plan timeline, it is the beauty of a master plan. Like, you assume that everything can happen, everything can happen at the same time. What we have mentioned to you, we have to keep the plan operational, so that has been a constant issue that has limited the amount of work that we can do. And we're going to talk about, a little bit about that. But that has basically extended the completion schedule for these master plan identified projects. We, the master plan identified a number of future projects and identified an estimated cost and construction scoping stages. That obviously, again, under the best of circumstances, a lot of things has happened, and what we are seeing in the implementation of this capital program is that the cost has significantly increased. The designated future land uses on plant lands, that is consistent, that has not changed, and Kevin will help us kind of just walk through some of the things that are happening now, but that is still a constant. The master plan also was supposed to illustrate how to connect the community to the bay. There is no change there, so those plans still stand as they were established originally. And then there was something else in the master plan about the strategy for protecting the facility from sea level rise. And that we'll discuss towards the end. That's not something that we are in charge of implementing, but there is other factors that have delayed the implementation of that. So when the master plan was completed, it basically identified 2.2 billion in infrastructure upgrades that were required. Most of these were focused on rehabilitation and repair, so basically just rehabbing the existing infrastructure. That number that was identified by the master plan did not include any funding for land development, for indirect or direct potable reuse, for habitat management, for recreational uses. It was only for RWF infrastructure-related. The master plan identified almost 100 projects. So that's a lot of projects to complete to get to where they needed us to go, 2.2 billion, 30 years, and a conventional design bid build project delivery. And we'll talk about that as we go forward, because this is one of the changes that we have done. Are we the only ones doing something like this? No. A lot of the wastewater agencies in the area are suffering from the same problems, like old infrastructure. You can see here a few examples, East Bay Municipal Utility District, San Jose, Santa Clara, that's us, San Mateo, San Francisco, Silicon Valley. But what we want to show you here is just that there is a lot of work happening, and that's also one of the challenges, because we are basically competing with a lot of different projects and a lot of really large capital programs. And this is sometimes a little bit challenging, because we are basically all competing for the same consultants, the same contractors, the same people doing the work for us. So that has also sometimes been a condition for higher prices in the in the projects that we're working with. So 2013 kind of started the implementation of the capital program. We had already a master plan recommendation. And just just to give you an idea of where we were in 2013 as a program, the capital program at that time was delivering anywhere between $7 and $10 million in capital. So this is really a small program that that we had at that time. As of then, you can see by year, we start ramping up, but we are basically at this point delivering over $100 and $120 million on a yearly basis. The last couple of years were a little lower, around 1997. But what we want to show here is that at the time that the master plan finished and we were supposed to start this capital program, the city was really not established to deliver a program of this size. So at that time, and what we are showing here in the red line, is the amount of full-time employees that has been used to deliver this program. And this is a combination, and we'll talk a little bit about that, of ESD employees, program management consultants, public works consultants, but we didn't have that infrastructure. So one of the first things that I'll just move to the next slide. And our apologies, the presentation is a little slow. So we want to show here also five-year CIP, so you can see how the program has ramped up. So where we were when we started, and this also basically reflects how we have grown the program, both in capacity and people, but also in delivery, and how we are at this point. You can see 18 to 22, that that five year was one of our highest peaks, and when we deliver a lot of our big projects. We are now coming again into like a little bit of a lower portion for the fiscal year 22 to 26. And then you can see after that, we are going to start going up again. This also reflects a little bit our process, because it takes a while to plan some of the work. These are really long, long-lasting projects. The design and permitting of any of our projects could go for up to two years. And then construction, it will go for two, three years, depending on the type of project. So they are really long-lasting, so you will see that reflected in how our cash flow and everything works. So how did we do going from $10 million capital program to a hundred and something million dollar capital program? So one of the first things that was done was establishing a program management office. This was something that the city of San Jose had done in the past for the for the airport, so basically meant to bring a professional consultant that was more in line with that type of program, and bring them to the city to help us kind of establish the program and kick the the delivery. So we got a contract with MWH at the time, that has since then changed to Stantec in 2013, and that included what we call an eight-month startup phase, that was a program validation. And basically, that went through the projects that were identified in the master plan, the 100-plus projects, and they were packaged into 33 larger projects. And the reason for that was just to make it more acceptable in terms of like the construction interaction, the timing, the feasibility of getting a contract for a size of that project, all that. So we decided to package all these things into 33 larger projects, and then we established a number of program controls. So one of the things that we have done as a program is basically have a very deliberate way to deliver projects and make sure that all our projects are done the same way. So we established what we call a project delivery model. We also set up a program portal, that's basically like a SharePoint, where everybody was getting all the all the information and everything in the same place, a program execution plan, which basically means that everybody's doing the projects the same way, and then reporting and metrics. The reporting and metrics portion was very important for us, because we want to be very transparent with the the way that we use the money and how the projects are going. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And with all those things, once we had those those programs and all the projects compounded into larger projects, we developed a five-year resource plan and CIP staff in 2014. And that was the start for like a lot of the growth that we had as a division and as a department. And right now, we just want to kind of share with you who is responsible for delivering this program. So ESD, as we mentioned, we are the overall department in charge. So we take the program lead, we do all the, at this point, and we'll talk a little bit more about this, city staff does all the package management, which is basically all those big number of projects that we mentioned, it's all managed by city staff, project management, resource management, reporting, controls, O and M coordination, all the budget and financing and communications, it's all done in-house by ESD. Public Works is a partnered department for us. They do the procurement, so all, as you guys know, all municipal contracts are done through the city's platforms, procurement does that for us. And they also support some of the construction management for us. And we still have a very small number of programmatic consultants, we'll talk about that. At the beginning, they were giving us also a lot of staff augmentation, and I'll mention that in the next slide, that has gone away in a little bit. And the program actually only has two more years, I think, in contract with us, and then that will be it, the city will be in charge of running that. So they still provide technical experts and just a little bit of program management for us, but it's again, a very light consultant presence now compared to the beginning of And here, just a little bit of, if you have never seen our reporting, this is kind of like, we used to do it monthly without do it quarterly, but you can expect to have a report showing what is the progress of the program, how are we doing with our key performance indicators, how are we doing with our expenditures, all those things. So again, that's part of the transparency that we wanted to have running this program. And here, just wanted to show a little bit of the transition that we had from the program management office. So this was an important portion for us when we started this program. You can see in 2013, about 22% of the roles that were established in the program were performed by city staff, and almost 80% was done by consultants. You can see, and that involves a lot of different things, but how we have this transition, and at this point, we're basically 80% performed by the city, is still 20%, and this is like a specific technical expertise and things like that. But we have basically more or less transitioned from the PMO to be mostly a city staff program. And what you see here is one, like it's a slightly older picture, but that is our CIP staff that is currently working either as project managers, package managers, part of our controls, part of our finance and contracts, and all the people supporting the program. And with that, Capil is going to continue talking a little bit about the programmatic approach that we have.
Good morning. Again, my name is Capel Verma, and I am the Deputy Director for CIP. Appreciate your time on a Friday morning. You know, for the last few minutes, we've discussed the plant master plan and how that led to the implementation of the capital improvement program at the Regional Wastewater Facility. Mariana noted the growth and development of our internal staff, which is crucial to building and delivering this program. You know, the people really are the cornerstone. They are the strength and foundation of what we do, and I think we can all agree that anything built upon a strong foundation will be set up to withstand all kinds of adversity in the future. Over the next few slides, I want to discuss a little bit how we've continued to build upon our strong foundation in our programmatic approach and framework for the CIP program. So how do we maximize powerful program delivery? Well, first and foremost, we start with structured and deliberate decision-making. That's really important to us. We have a strategic and responsible management of risk through the use of We have a strategic and responsible management of risk through the use of risk matrices, both project-specific and program-wide. We have regular meetings to review key performance indicators or K P Is on a quantitative basis as well as important qualitative metrics as well. We have transparency throughout the process, both internal and external. I guess, you know, one can say that one of our key success factors is to be audit-proof as part of this program, make sure that we're communicating all the right things to all the right people all the time. This all rolls up to what we like to call our project delivery model, which is something that Mariana had alluded to previously. This is too dense a slide again for Friday morning, so feel free to not read everything that's on it, but I'm going to talk you through it a little bit. The P D M is not only our foundation, but it's also our guiding principle. It effectively helps us to navigate through every single project that we have at the program. The green funnel on the left-hand side represents the preliminary stages of a project, what we call project initiation. This is when the high-level planning really takes form and starts to become the possibility for a tangible solution to a set of complex problems. And that's a really exciting time for each one of us in each one of the projects. The larger boxes there represent the classical and conventional phases of capital delivery, feasibility development, moving into a design phase and really structuring contract documentation, going out to bid and getting a general contractor to come and do work for us and bid on the project, and then actually do the construction itself, and then all the fun wrapping up and documentation in the post-construction. You know, everything within this delivery model is super important for our success, and I think we've done a pretty good job over the last 10 or 11 years of implementing it. That being said, those red diamonds are really key and critical for our success, and those red diamonds are what we call stage gates. It's a little bit, I want to say, specific to our program itself. A stage gate is a meeting of all the minds, it's a meeting of all the stakeholders in between every major decision-making stage of a project. We get together and a project management team displays information, all the metrics of the projects, and makes recommendations as to how to move forward. And the key here is that we have buy-in from all the stakeholders, operations, maintenance staff, who are going to be the end users, C I P executive leadership, as well as partners in public works. We don't want to look back after a stage gate and redo or remake any of the decisions that we've made in there. So again, this is the project delivery model, and it guides everything we do on a daily Historically, most capital projects that are funded by public monies have employed a design, bid, build, delivery approach. It's, it's fairly straightforward. I think ideally all of us are familiar with that. It's, we hire an engineer of record or a designer to put together a set of contract documentation for us that then goes out for a competitive bidding process. Perspective contractors, construction contractors will take a look at that documentation and provide to the owner or us what they think is the best price to deliver that project. On bid opening day is where we take a look at the bids and review them for their responsiveness, and the lowest responsive bidder typically is awarded that project and moves into construction. Again, in the civil engineering, capital delivery world, this is classically how it's mostly done, and this is how the R W F in particular, before this program, has delivered projects for us. There's a slew of benefits, it's sequential, it's structured, everyone understands the process. There can be drawbacks, too. You know, we, you can get a surprise of what the cost of the project is, not only on bid opening day, but also as the construction contractor moves forward in the process itself, there could be a slew of change orders depending on site conditions and other uncontrollable circumstances that we have to deal with. In the early stages of this program, I do want to point out that we did receive council approval to employ a alternative project delivery method, primarily design-build. In this scenario, with the help of an owner's advisor, we procure a design-build entity, and that's comprised of a construction contractor and a designer team together, working collaboratively with us to help develop innovative solutions to our problems. The benefits, in my opinion, are fairly numerous to design-build, and we'll be able to point that out in a few slides here. One of the, one of the great benefits is having a little bit, a lot more confidence rather in cost control and understanding what the actual cost of a project is going to be earlier on. Furthermore, design-build facilitates a very collaborative type of atmosphere in between the owner and the design-build entity. It's more solution-oriented. And I do want to point out that we've been able to deliver over three major projects using design-build, and a lot of you have heard about them, cogeneration facility, our new headworks facility, and then now our dewatering facility. We have another major one coming up, our additional digester facility upgrade. Okay, the bottom line. Our program has a team dedicated to managing and developing our annual budget, and these are our core guiding principles. We don't take any of this lightly. First and foremost, prioritizing critical or must-have improvements over what might be nice to have helps to control costs for us. We continuously exist in a cycle of refining project cost estimates and schedules as projects evolve, and they evolve over time on a month-to-month basis. Phasing and sequencing of project work to spread out major encumbrances over time is also a guiding principle for us. With generational equity in mind, we like to employ the use of financing for projects so we're not hitting current-day ratepayers with huge costs upfront for services and utilities that they may not be using for the next several decades. And most importantly, implementing these principles for the purposes of, of keeping our rates stable. Our ratepayers are first and foremost on top of mind for us and, as well as fiscal Okay, as we are regularly developing financially responsible budgets, we work hard to control costs as well. These are some of the things that we use on a regular basis in the program to do that. I touched upon project stage gates. Like I said, it's consensus building, it's making sure that we document and are transparent and don't look back, but it also helps to make sure that we control costs and we have adequate budgets in our planning documentation so we're not hit with surprises over the, the first couple of years of a project delivery. We also use third-party estimators to review and validate our construction cost estimates. Sometimes our designers maybe miss something, sometimes there's something that needs to be further evaluated, and it's just a good third-party independent check for us to do that. If project costs seem to be ballooning or there are surprises that come up in the early stages of design, we will employ a value engineering exercise and activity where we get an independent engineering firm to come and take a look objectively at the project and our approach to it, and offer a critical eye, and offer potential improvements where we could be saving some scope and some money or doing things a little bit more efficiently. Our budget team also holds regular updates with project managers on a monthly basis and hold teams to understand the financial health of the projects and to be able to recalibrate and adjust as necessary where, where we need it.
We're going to talk about a little bit, about the funding strategy and how we have been funding the program for the last 10 years. One of the things that we were interested in pursuing at the beginning of the program was the state revolving funds, and, and we just want to give you an update because we talked about this many years ago. And in 2015, we tried to get S R F funding, we actually went through the process, we got all the documentation ready with the state, but in, as we were going through that process at that time in 2016, the focus of the S R F were mostly for water-related projects and a lot of like recycling water and all that, so we were informed that it was very unlikely that we will get funding for a wastewater-specific project. Also at that time, there were some issues with some of the financial conditions that they had and how would that limit our capacity to do other type of financing and short-term borrowing. So at that time, and after they told us that we most likely would not get the, the funding, that was kind of deemed unknown really at that time, not a path for us at, at that point. So what happened then is that we move on to have revenue notes. So in 20, you got it? So in, in 2022, in 2027, sorry, 2017, my apologies. 2017, after we kind of explored the whole S R F thing, we got 300 million in revenue note programs, and that was basically allowing us to have this, basically a cash line that we could use, and the funding was used basically for all the construction and consultant costs, and then we were still using cash-funded, and, and that is from rates, for staff and other non-construction costs. In 2022, we actually went through the process of issuing 300 million in green bonds, just basically to repay that line of credit that we have, and these were also climate bond-certified. So I think this, this is one of the first programs in the city that has got those type of green and climate-certified bonds, which basically means that the investors know that the, the money is being used in environmentally sound projects, and we had to basically give a lot of information of the type of projects that we do and how they comply with all these different things. And also, it will allow, kind of like attract a broader range of investors, the ones that have the interest in investing in things that are, again, environmentally conscious. And that allows us to also open, adding another 190 million dollar line credit. So we, right now, that's what we have, and that's what has been funding for the last 10 years. This is one of the things that we'll talk a little bit later in the presentation, but ones that we have some other better form ideas of what the final cost of the program and some of the nutrient-regulated issues that we will be discussing, that the financing is an item that we will have to come back to council later on to kind of talk about maybe what is the, the strategy that we will continue to follow. But as of today, this is basically the strategy, the strategy that we have. We still have the cash funding from the rates, and again, that's been mostly used for staff and non-construction, and most of the, like, high construction value is being funded by the line of credit that we, that we use.
Okay, so in review, we've shown that we have critical infrastructure that requires substantive improvements. We have a developed-through consensus plant master plan that was adopted by city council, and that plant master plan effectively laid out the vision for the capital improvement program, which we've been delivering now for over 10 years. So just a brief, oversimplified snapshot of where are we today? So as of today, as we sit here, we have 36 completed capital projects, which is fairly substantive to do in 10 years. We also have 17 ongoing projects that are active, whether they're in design or construction or post-construction, in some phase of project delivery, and we've expended over a billion dollars to deliver all that work over the last 10 years since the 14, 15 fiscal year. Generally speaking, from a percentage basis, if we look back at the plant master plan and the number of projects that were identified, we're close to half, having delivered roughly about 45%, a little bit less than half of the projects that were envisioned at the time, with about 40% left to go. This slide includes some terminology that says gap projects, and we're, we're going to talk about that in a few slides. What we really mean by that here is that there are projects that were identified that were not included originally in the plant master plan. As you start to deliver and uncover things and start to study and analyze the facility a lot more and deal with a lot of your current environment, there are additional work that is identified to be delivered. Not to beat New Headworks to death, but I would like to really just take a moment to spotlight what has been really a flagship project for us. And just a brief review, what is Headworks? And for those of you that attended the tour last Friday, this, every, every unit process is super important at the facility, but the Headworks protects the entire facility. It's a mechanical process, there's nothing biological or, or chemical going on here. It's simply to take out all of the inorganic material that may harm downstream processes such that the regional wastewater facility can do its job and protect our environment. So a very important project, and this was a project where, again, as said in the video, replaced our Headworks 1, which is over 50 years old and was having a significant amount of operational and maintenance issues, potential safety issues, as well as not being able to do its proper job. This was a design-build project, and roughly $140 million in construction and two years to, to construct resulted in a safer and a more efficient working environment, and one of the things to be exceptionally proud of for this project is that construction started after lockdown occurred during the pandemic, and we were still able to deliver it on time and within budget, and I think that was a real huge win for the program. It is fairly consistently applauded by R W F staff as one of, if not the most successful capital project to date. It's not just the regional wastewater facility staff that thinks that. We have received numerous awards on this one project, both at the local, state, and national level, in particular, Design Build Institute of America, the Construction Management Association of America, as well as the California Water Environment Association. Why is this important? Well, hardware is cool to keep in a trophy case and show people when they come by, but industry recognition is really important. What we do on a daily basis is very important, and trying to deliver a program of this magnitude, when we get that kind of national recognition on it, it adds to our credibility. And when we're credible, as Mariana mentioned before, there's a high level of competition now that agencies are seeing to attract work and, and qualified consultants and qualified contractors to be a owner of choice. These are the kind of things that help us with it and are going to help us over the Well, we've had lots of, a lot of wins and successes, but it hasn't been easy. We've definitely learned a lot along the way, and, and we have certainly been very cognizant of our observations and documentation and learning from our opportunities for growth. I'd like to pause for a minute and reflect on what the plant master plan may not have captured over a decade ago. The plant master plan, as again Mariana alluded to earlier, is a high-level planning document that assumed that anything is possible within a perfect world. The regional wastewater facility is not a perfect world. It is a living, breathing organism with aging infrastructure that is in dire need of improvement in order to protect our community. That's the bottom line. Excuse me. If I may offer an analogy, and some of you may have heard it before, imagine that you own and drive a vintage car, and imagine that you're driving that vintage car going the speed limit down a freeway. The engine starts to give, and you have a flat tire. Now, there's no shoulder and there's no off-ramp. The challenge ahead of you is how do you change that tire and start to improve and rebuild that engine while you're still driving down the freeway? So think about that and sit on that for a second. That, that's, that's a really complex problem, and it requires a lot of innovative solution around it. That being said, maybe you have a plan upfront that's going to help you deliver that. You're going to start working through that plan, and I'm a firm believer, plan your work, work your plan. a firm believer, plan your work, work your plan. But nothing ever goes as planned, does it? So that's a lot of what we see in the program. You've seen all of our implementation, all of our processes, all of our structure, our transparency, our reporting, our budget control, cost control measures. But we still have to recalibrate on a regular basis as to how we're going to deliver projects. And sometimes that's early in the planning stages, and sometimes that's right in the middle or heart of a project itself. So what are some of the nuances that the Plant Master Plan may not have envisioned? Mariana mentioned we have a twenty-four-seven operating facility. We can't shut it off. And each one of the unit processes is continuously interacting and engaging with each other. And it's a really challenging thing to deliver a construction project without being able to turn anything off. Rehabilitating aging infrastructures is tough. The Plant Master Plan did a pretty good job of understanding the condition, generally speaking of the whole facility. But as we start to peel layers back and do more intrusive analyses and condition assessments, we find out that there's a lot more infrastructure in dire need of repair than maybe what was originally envisioned. The COVID-19 pandemic, I don't like to bring that up a whole lot anymore. I think people are kind of tired of it. But the bottom line is, it did have an impact. We are a critical facility and with essential workers, so we were able to continue our work. But it was a real challenge, and we were really successful going through it. The pandemic did result in significant supply chain issues for equipment, construction materials, contractors. None of that was envisioned in twenty thirteen. There's a huge level of competition for qualified contractors, consultants. Like I said before, the more we can become an owner of choice and a client of choice, the better off we're going to be in the future. We'll talk about evolving stringent, excuse me, regulatory requirements in a few slides from now. And one of the things that was a very strong assumption by the Plant Master Plan for cost escalation over a few decades, we've seen unprecedented cost escalation over the last ten years.
So with that said, what we're basically trying to repeat to you is that the master plan was wonderful, but there was still a lot that we are encountering as we go through the work. And we want to kind of just spend a little bit, just kind of walking you through a few of the issues, just to give you a little bit more of an example, so you can see firsthand what we're dealing. One of the things that Kapil mentioned is that the plant is operational twenty-four-seven. And at some point, we have mentioned this, we have almost two hundred and fifty people just dedicated to operations, and they are there twenty-four-seven at different times during the day. At some point, when we had the peak of our construction work, we had almost seven hundred construction workers on site. So now imagine, like, having all that work. And at the same time, any connection that a contractor has to make to any existing facility has to be supported by our operations staff. So on top of doing the work that they are supposed to be doing, they need to be supporting this work. There is, we are an industrial-type facility, so electrical work is actually not only difficult, it's dangerous, could be extremely dangerous because it's high voltage sometimes. So there is a lot of coordination that needs to happen. And I think that that gets minimized, actually, the amount of work that needs to happen for this construction to go ahead. So one of the things also that we want to mention, and again, master plan assumes a lot of the things are at a high level, but when you get on site and start kind of doing work, this is a very old facility. And one of the things that happens when you start having construction from the fifties all the way to the eighties is that a lot of the materials that we're using constructions in the past, now they are deemed hazardous. So we have a lot of asbestos, we have a lot of lead, and we have also PCBs on site. So these are actually one of the facilities that we were rehabbing, our digesters facility. We found PCBs in all the construction joints, and also they have been, for so long, PCBs had transferred to the soils. So that was, and when Kapil talks about learning moments, that was a huge learning experience, not to call it a nightmare, because we found this in the middle of a traditional design bid build. So we had to stop work around the construction. We had to contact EPA, and then we had to go, like, furiously on a six-to-eight-month process to get approval and a plan to do a remediation for this. So we have to basically remove all contaminated soil. You can see the people here in the white hazardous suits, setting up various specific areas for work. So it is very expensive, and it's very time-consuming. So that's one of the things, and that's also one of the reasons why we're moving to a non-traditional method with design build, so we can manage that kind of risk better. But that's something that now we know consistently we're going to be dealing while rehabbing the facility. PCBs were found in everything up to the seventies. Same with lead, same with everything. So anything that we know was built before that, we know there is a high chance that you will find these materials. The other issue that we are dealing with, and some of you that came to the site saw some of this set up, the facility is operational twenty-four-seven, we mentioned, is operated by gravity. So what that means is that you cannot just shut down the flow. So when you want to do something, if you are doing work in your kitchen, okay, disconnect the water for two days, you can do it. We can never disconnect the facility from the sewage lines. So even if we have to isolate major structures, we have to continue providing that flow through the facility. So we're talking about a hundred MGD, a hundred million gallons per day. If you think about how that works, that flow is equivalent, our chief plant operator gave us the numbers, is equivalent to filling an Olympic pool every nine minutes. So that's the flow that you're dealing with. So any work that we have to do, you have to provide that backup. So what you're seeing here is, we had to, and speaking of things that you find, we were trying to make a connection, regular connection, and then our contractor found a severely corroded structure and line, seventy-eight-inch line, so basically you can stand and don't touch it, all corroded, about to collapse. When you find that kind of stuff, you have to go ahead and fix it. So we needed to fix this. What you're seeing here is a temporary routing system for a hundred MGD. This is basically the largest pumps you will find. And one thing that we did right is that we set up the system, and you could rent these, and that's a huge cost. We actually bought these pumps, and we have used them in several projects after that. But it is very difficult. This is not a place that was set up to do that. We have to create a wet well. We have to do all sorts of things. So it is very complex rehabilitation work. And I don't think that when we come and talk about the work and how it is more expensive, it is very hard for people to picture that. So we just wanted to share some of the details of how the work is actually done.
And just to keep sharing, this, these are some photographs that represent the complexity, again, of getting work done, reverting back to the New Headworks project. This was one scope component of it, which was the installation of a ninety-six-inch raw sewage line through the heart of the treatment plant. And it's, I think a picture paints a thousand words. The manner in which our construction contractor was able to install this pipeline was one of the most amazing things that I've seen in my career. And the amount of utility crossings just within the facility itself, over two hundred fifty, took a significant and meticulous approach and strategy and construction methodology to implement. And it was done successfully. I touched upon this about a couple minutes ago, with regards to what the Plant Master Plan had assumed with regards to cost escalation in the future. This is a graphical representation of that assumption of roughly three percent on an annual basis. You can see that every single year, the cost escalation has been greater than three percent, including just following the pandemic timeframe upwards of thirteen percent. And so this, this in and of itself, I think, is very telling and has had a huge impact on the cost of delivery for the program. Okay, well, we've talked about challenges, and we've had them, and we were, you know, we wouldn't expect not to have them. But I truly believe, and we stand firmly on the idea that we are still set up for a high level of success. We've built a strong team of qualified professionals over the last ten, eleven years. We've built systems for deliberate decision-making to ensure a rational planning process and stakeholder buy-in. And we've evolved innovation in procurement and delivery, not only in the manner in which we procure our third-party consultants and contractors, but also being able to deliver both still in design bid build as well as alternative project delivery or design build.
And we're going to transition a little bit here. We have talked a lot of the things that have happened since master plan and the changes. But on top of that, we have been faced with really difficult regulatory requirements that are also coming our way and changing some of the things that we do. So Eric Donlevy will help us walk through some of those.
Thank you. Eric Donlevy, the Deputy Director for Regulatory Affairs and Purified Water for ESD. Go ahead for the next slide. I'll walk you through some of these regulations that present other challenges, not just the, not just the infrastructure challenges. So the facility is subject to multiple regulatory discharge permits under the Clean Water Act, and these are known as National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES permits. These permits are reissued and updated every five years to reflect changes in operations and changes in regulatory requirements. Now, the facility has an individual NPDS permit that governs the general O and M, requires pretreatment and other programmatic elements, and it contains most of the water quality requirements that the RWF has to meet at the end of pipe as the treated effluent flows into the bay. But the facility is also subject to separate regional permits that are issue-specific. For example, there is a regional permit for all wastewater treatment plants for mercury and PCBs. And then there is another separate regional permit for nutrients. And that nutrient permit is the focus of the update that I'm going to give today. Next slide. So the map on the right shows the location of all the wastewater treatment plants that discharge into the bay and are subject to the nutrients permit. The nutrient permit focuses on nitrogen and phosphorus that is discharged from wastewater treatment plants. And Mariana mentioned earlier in the presentation that nitrogen comes from human waste, and phosphorus is also a human waste component, but also from detergents. It's notable, so these are not sort of industry pollutants that are coming to the facility. It's notable that our facility on the lower right of the map discharges to the Lower South Bay, and that's a shallow, more environmentally vulnerable region of the bay, which is why we have a more advanced treatment process than many of our other wastewater treatment partners. Our discharges have the greatest effect on the Lower South Bay, but they do travel north into the South and Central Bays, so we influence those parts of the bay as well. The San Francisco Bay has long been recognized as having high nutrient levels, but factors in the bay, like physical factors like high turbidity and tidal mixing, strong tidal mixing, and other environmental controls have prevented the negative environmental effects of high nitrogen occurring in the bay. Now, for perspective, compared to other large urbanized estuaries, the nitrogen levels in the bay are in the top ninetieth percentile. And it's worth noting that many other large estuaries around the country, like Chesapeake Bay and Puget Sound and others, they already have nitrogen management requirements in place. San Francisco Bay has not had those same requirements up until very recently. Now, the bay's been intensely studied for decades from a water quality perspective, and this includes tracking nutrient levels and environmental responses to nutrients. And around 2010, a change in the response to nutrients was detected from this monitoring. And while that change didn't result in poor environmental conditions, it did represent a change toward negative conditions, and concerns about that trend led to the first group nutrient permit for wastewater treatment plants in 2014. Neither that initial permit nor the 2019 reissued permit restricted nitrogen discharges, but the 2019 permit did contain a long-term planning target for nitrogen that agencies were told to plan for. And we began planning for that. Next slide, please. So why are we, why do we care about nutrients and especially nitrogen? Well, nitrogen is the fertilizer or fuel that algae use to grow in saltwater environments like San Francisco Bay. With high levels of fuel, it's possible to get out-of-control algae growth. Excessive algae growth will lower dissolved oxygen levels in the water as the algae die and decay. And widespread low dissolved oxygen can suffocate fish and other wildlife, resulting in large die-offs. Some algae also produce toxins that affect wildlife, humans, pets, and livestock. And the effects from toxic algae can include sickness, paralysis, and death. If toxin-producing algae are present, excessive growth can also increase the amount of these especially harmful algae, causing environmental impacts beyond low dissolved oxygen. Now, as mentioned, despite elevated levels of nitrogen in San Francisco Bay, which are largely coming from wastewater treatment plants, we hadn't observed any of these negative effects until, next slide, please. Summer of 2022, there was a red tide bloom that began in late July and persisted through August. So it was a toxic red tide algae species known as heterosigma akashiro, and it directly affects fish, and it originated in the Alameda Inner Harbor near the Oakland Estuary. Over the course of a couple weeks, it spread throughout the bay with the greatest impacts in the Central and South Bays. Impacts were severe, with hundreds of thousands of fish dying from both toxicity and suffocation, and the event made front-page headlines. A smaller, less impactful bloom also occurred in the summer of 2023. Now, I've been studying the bay for over twenty-one years, and I can say very confidently that this was the single most impactful event affecting bay water quality and wildlife in that time and probably for the past forty years. Die-offs were most severe in the South and Central Bay, but the red tide was also present in the North Bay and also in the Lower South Bay where we discharge. Next slide, please. So what does all that mean? Well, the algae bloom was a game changer, and this was one of those things that we have to, you know, adapt to. It was a game changer with respect to the direction the regulations had been going. The nutrient permit was set to be reissued in summer of 2024, and it was reissued in July, on July tenth of 2024. Prior to the bloom, the regulators were going to impose a load cap on all wastewater treatment plants to prohibit any increases of nitrogen discharges to the bay. Because nitrogen loads in wastewater increase as population increases, the load caps would force agencies to take action in the future to prevent increases of their nitrogen discharges as population, populations grow in the service area. The algae bloom changed the game on that load cap approach, and rather than capping loads, the reissued permit now requires load reductions of nitrogen loads that were discharged in 2022 from all facilities. These reductions greatly increase the regional costs to wastewater treatment plants compared to the previously proposed load caps. And the general requirement is that nitrogen reductions must be implemented baywide over the next ten years to achieve an aggregate load from all wastewater treatment plants to the bay that will lessen the impacts of any future blooms to acceptable levels. Next slide, please. So our regular rate others have, our applied with from now until 2034. That interim limit is effectively a load cap to prevent increases, and the final limit reflects the required reductions that must be achieved in ten years' time, because there's recognition that it takes time to achieve significant reductions. Now, this is the most significant regional regulatory action affecting wastewater treatment plants in decades, and it's estimated a cost upwards of eleven billion dollars regionally to upgrade all treatment plants. Now, from January to May of 2024, city staff were actively negotiating directly with our regulators and through coalition partnerships with other wastewater treatment plants on these limits. And the good news for the RWF is that we already achieved significant nitrogen reductions compared to other large and medium-sized facilities in the region. And Mariana touched on some of those past upgrades that we have accomplished. And those reduce our incoming nitrogen by up to eighty percent. This is significant when compared to other facilities in the region that currently reduce approximately fifteen to twenty percent of their incoming nitrogen. This performance does set us apart from other facilities, and because of that performance, when we were, when the region was faced with load reductions, our expectation prior to the the initial draft permit was that the RWF would not receive significant reduction requirements because we had already put those significant reductions in place. But the initial draft limits for the RWF in the draft permit, shown here, of 5,000 kilograms per day as an interim limit and 3,700 kilograms per day as a final limit, those numbers unfairly held the RWF to a much higher nitrogen reduction standard than was being required of other facilities around the region. Had these limits held, they would have effectively shifted a lot of the responsibility and cost disproportionately to the RWF in the region. Fortunately, they did not hold, and our negotiations were successful, and we were able to achieve fair interim limits and final limits for the RWF of 6,400 kilograms per day and 5,000 kilograms per day for a final limit. These limits are proportional to our size and flows in relation to other facilities in the region, and this successful negotiation for these proportional limits likely saved the RWF significant additional capital costs associated with, that would have been associated with those initial draft limits. We had proactively evaluated some actions necessary to remain in compliance with the anticipated future limits under the pre-bloom load cap scenario, and after a comprehensive study, RWF identified some treatment process upgrades to maintain loads. We are in the process of evaluating that technology to see if it will enable us to meet our stringent load reduction requirements as well. There's a lot of challenges to this, managing nitrogen over time as population increases and as operational changes occur, and Mariana's going to walk through some of the options that we are evaluating now.
So what? For us, to be able to comply with this new permit. So and what we have here, there are different ways, but for the most part, for us, it will mean treatment process upgrades. So as Eric mentioned, the load, like, and the reduction by 40%, this is in perpetuity. So it's 40% of the current loads that we have today. So even when we experience growth and everything, we will have to keep that cap. That means that we will just have to keep treating to a higher standard as time goes. So that is one of the challenges, and that will be achieved most likely through treatment process upgrades. This is mostly, and we discuss a little bit during the presentation, as we mentioned, nutrients are taken care of mostly through the biological process. So this is an upgrade to our irrigation treatment process, and it's a significant upgrade and it's a costly upgrade. One of the things that we just want to share is that because we have been doing so much work ahead of time, even when we will be facing a significant investment on this, it's less than what other agencies will have to do. Just for your kind of information on how this conversation is going, San Francisco has already set up a $1.5 billion program just to deal with their nutrients. And the combined discharge from San Francisco is more or less the same as ours. So ours is not going to be that high because of all the work we have done, so we are in a better position, but it still is going to be difficult. The other things that the board is interested on is in pursuing, because not everybody's doing recycled water, so increased water recycling, we do that already, and they also want to study nature-based solutions, which may be, maybe more viable for smaller agencies, but for a plant of our size, really is most likely treatment process upgrades what we'll be looking at. So in terms of what is going to happen and what are the immediate steps for implementation? So as Eric mentioned, we are evaluating what process upgrades would be required to be able to meet these new, more stringent limits, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we have been in, like, after 10 years of implementing the program, realizing how the costs have changed. And now with this additional kind of stress on how this plan is going to come, we are actually going to discuss a little bit, we are in the process of updating the technical component of the master plan. So we want to look again at what all these requirements are, and moving forward, what is going to take for us to be able to implement that. We are going to continue the engagement, and this is where Eric's participation is really valuable, continue engaging with the board, because one of the concerns is that they, the way that the discussion is going, they have mentioned, depending on how the bay does, we may have to change these requirements again, and that's a concern. We, as all the other agencies, we want to be able to have some certainty of what the planning levels need to be so we can plan our project. So we don't want a moving target, and that's one thing that we will talk about, that's what we are trying to work with the board, and we're working through that not only as a city, but through a coalition of the backwater, the Bay Area Clean Water Agency. So all together, we're trying to work with the board. And also, we are going to continue kind of looking how to afford this new requirement. As mentioned, we are in a better position than other agencies because we already do a lot of that work, and still there will be a significant increase in investment that will be required. And the way that our planning is going right now, we're expecting to have all our numbers lined up by May, so then we can share with council how all this is looking. And again, explore additional strategies. The board has interest in exploring nature-based solutions and other things that we will continue kind of like engaging, but again, it's a difficult path for us as a large agency. Is there a question, Councilmember Kame? Okay.
The end is near. Okay. We've talked a lot about the Plant Master Plan as adopted in 2013 and the corresponding navigation through our capital program delivery. One of the requirements in that Plant Master Plan was to perform updates throughout the delivery of the capital program, and as Mariana mentioned, we are currently in the middle of a technical update to the Plant Master Plan. So as I mentioned, what's the need for it? First and foremost, it was a requirement of the Plant Master Plan, but more than that, as we have discussed over the past hour-plus, there have been significant changes since the original assumptions in 2013 when the Plant Master Plan were adopted. I'm not going to review all of them in laundry list as we've already kind of gone through them, but that does require us, again, to recalibrate, not just on a project-by-project basis, but also as a programmatic basis. And large programs do require recalibration and a health check. Effectively, what's the goal of this health check? We've documented what we've done over the past 10 or 11 years, and we finished that just a couple of months ago. We're currently in the process of making recommendations for improvements at the Regional Wastewater Facility for the next 25 years, with all of those changes in mind that we've discussed already. And you see the date of January 2025 there, and we're effectively receiving draft final documentation from our consultant that's helping us through this technical update. The ultimate goal is to finish this roughly in April and bring forth the recommendations as a result of the technical update, and what the planning horizon over the next 25 years looks like, what the projects look like, and what the corresponding planning level costs for those projects look like. Just trying to keep it simple, we have some basic expected outcomes. We want to revise our guidance for the capital projects moving forward, and all of that revision of guidance will help to support the development of our CIP funding strategies over the next 25 years. So that being said, what are our next steps specific to CIP? We do look to complete the Plant Master Plan technical update and ideally come in May back to council to present it to everybody. We need to implement changes for the new regulatory requirements that Eric and Mariana have been discussing over the past few minutes. This is going to obviously have a management exercise for the increased costs, as well as an extension on the program schedule from what was envisioned back in 2013 for the Plant Master Plan. We're going to work on developing new financing strategies and put that all together in a package to start planning our five- and 10-year CIP implementation.
So how can, can you help us? How can council engage? So one of the things that we just wanted to mention in terms of advocacy, especially with the nutrient regulations, so we, we understand the importance of preserving the bay, and we agree with the board, but the concern is always, why will we keep the utility affordable, right? So we truly believe that this cannot be just on ratepayers, so that we should be seeking for participation from both the state and the federal government on this, and this is something that we're starting to work with our, the people that the city has for doing this type of advocacy, but also we are trying to build a coalition with the other large cities, like with San Francisco and potentially with Oakland, and then have our elected officials help us engage and try to get this, getting the local community engaged, getting the environmental groups, they have a lot of interest in getting this work done, but the amount of money that will be required is really large. So that's just where local government can help us, just to kind of bring this up and try to help us secure additional funding. So that's, that's one thing that we can see you helping us engage with. With that, that's the kind of like the end of the capital portion per se, and we have a little bit on the land use that we just want to give you an update. This is promised, it's very short. Kevin will do it really quickly, and then we can go through questions.
Good morning. Kevin Ice, Director of Real Estate, Assistant to the City Manager in the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. We're showing here the 2013 land use plan out of the Plant Master Plan, and I want to call out a highlight on the economic development lands. This is the area south of the main facility in the buffer lands along Highway 237 at the Zanker interchange. The RWF buffer lands have a restriction that prohibits uses incompatible with plant operations, including hotel or residential uses. The economic development area calls for industrial uses that are compatible with operations. This development will provide jobs, and the revenue will go to the RWF. Staff are preparing a request for interest solicitation to select a master developer partner for the 159-acre economic development lands to be subject to an exclusive negotiating agreement. We expect this solicitation to be issued in the spring of this year. More to come on this, and we'll coordinate in partnership with T-PAC in Santa Clara as we move forward. So this slide is showing the Power of the South Bay Transmission Project, which is being completed by LS Power. So LS Power has been awarded a contract by California's grid regulator, KISO, which stands for the California Independent System Operator, to construct the Power of Santa Clara Valley Project. The project is part of a larger effort to bring more power from the northern part of the state, where renewables are abundant, into the Bay Area to provide reliable and sufficient electrical capacity for the South Bay's growing electrical demand, including enhanced reliability for the RWF, the RWF's electricity service. LS Power is constructing multiple lines in the region. The Power of the South Bay Project specifically is a high-voltage electrical transmission line from Newark to Santa Clara traveling across the RWF. LS Power's project is backed by state-level eminent domain powers. However, staff have engaged LS Power to mitigate potential impacts to the plant through design improvements, and we have found LS Power to be receptive and cooperative with these efforts. The plant has advised on a route that does not disrupt operations and requests the lines to be run overhead initially on the east side of the drying beds as it comes in from Newark, and transitioning to underground as it reaches Zanker and travels west past the owl habitat. And LS Power will oblige this request. We're negotiating for the ability to require them to underground all lines in the future once the drying beds are decommissioned and the RWF determines the optimal route for the underground. The LS Power will need an easement, and they will pay fair market value for it. Once we have final easement design, we'll begin the appraisal process to confirm fair market value. I do want to mention, this slide mentions a potential baylands terminal location that would convert electricity into a form usable by the local electrical, local distribution grid. The project, as it's currently envisioned, will not require this terminal location, and they'll simply run the line along the route shown on this map. LS Power is pushing for a 26 to, 2026 to 2028 construction window, and there will be an opportunity to comment on their EIR in the spring of 2025. And the final easement package will be brought to T-PAC and the Santa Clara and San Jose City Councils for approval. This slide is showing Microsoft's data center on the, highlighted in red on the right, and then the economic development buffer lands to the left of that. The project, Microsoft's project, requires easements for infrastructure and access through RWF property. Some of this infrastructure will improve services in the area, including widening Zanker, extending McCarthy access, which is the access road off of Zanker, signalizing the intersection at McCarthy and Zanker, and running new utility infrastructure that can be utilized in the future. Microsoft will pay fair market value for the utility easements, and these easements will preserve flexibility for the plant's future developer in the buffer lands. So should the developer entity wish to rearrange service provision, they won't be blocked by what Microsoft is constructing now. Microsoft will need access to utilities, to access and utilities, excuse me, to cross the Valley Water Purification Center site and the planned purification center expansion area. Microsoft has engaged Valley Water to address their concerns, and Microsoft has agreed to improvements that will mitigate their project and benefit Valley Water's current and future expanded purification center project, such as relocating the visitor trailer and constructing a parking lot around it, running utility lines that Valley Water and the purification center will benefit from, and extending McCarthy Lane, which can service the future expanded purification center footprint. Staff have reviewed Microsoft's plans and provided feedback to mitigate impacts on the buffer lands and improve the usefulness to our future buffer lands development. We don't have a final proposed easement package from Microsoft, but once we receive an acceptable package, we will appraise the fair market value of the easements and bring it to T-PAC before seeking approval from the San Jose and Santa Clara City Councils. Microsoft is targeting to have these easements in place in the spring of 2025 and to begin construction in the summer of 2025.
So I'll give a quick update on advanced water purification expansion that Kevin mentioned. Valley Water and City of San Jose entered into a staff funding agreement in July of 2024 to support creation of a purified water program, and the program envisions a future new purification facility that would be adjacent to the existing purification facility, but the new facility would take treated wastewater from the RWF, purify it, and use that product water for direct potable reuse, or DPR, drinking water. And we've been working closely with Valley Water over the past six months on initial efforts, which are focusing on establishing a small-scale demonstration facility to treat approximately half a million gallons of treated wastewater a day. That demonstration facility will be implemented by amending existing agreements for the existing advanced water purification center. That small demonstration facility will enable an accurate evaluation of the even more advanced treatment technology that would be required for a direct potable reuse project. And it, that's required to show that it meets the newly adopted potable reuse regulations as well that were adopted and finalized in October of 2024. Demonstration project like this is required under those regulations, and it will also enable evaluation of the waste streams associated with water purification so that viability of disposal options of those waste streams can be assessed for a future envisioned full-scale facility. A final element is construction of a new visitors' center at the A final element is construction of a new visitors' center at the purification center that will provide outreach and education related to potable reuse. Now, to enable construction and operation of the demonstration facility, like I said, the existing agreements between the city and Valley Water for the advanced water purification center are being modified. Modifications to those agreements are anticipated to be completed this spring or early summer, and they will come to council for review and approval. A future full-scale facility, still conceptual, that would require brand-new, separate agreements between Valley Water and the city. Detailed discussions on those terms for the full-scale facility have not really begun yet, and they'll require evaluation of multiple issues and considerations, including facility size, management, and responsibility of the reverse osmosis concentrate or waste streams from that, regulatory compliance impacts, private activity analysis, and coordination and alignment with the adjacent Microsoft project that Kevin mentioned. Those are some of, just some of the main issues that will be evaluated as that, as part of that project. The shared objectives for the full-scale facility is that it would impose no additional cost, risk, or liability to the regional wastewater facility.
Okay. And we're just promised down to the last two. Shoreline Levy, just a quick update. We mentioned before sea level rise for the master plan was always considered to be provided by the shoreline levy. This is a project that is not from the City of San Jose. This is a project from the Corps of Engineers in partnership with Valley Water, and we just want to give an update. They were completing reaches one through three. The ones that are located adjacent to the RWF will be reaches four and five. They are running with problems with funding. They have insufficient funding. As we mentioned before, their first contracts were much larger than they were expecting. So, they are right now in the process of running a value engineering, trying to find solutions to be able to finalize the construction. We are kind of participant with them. We are committed to the project, but we still have no final date for when this is going to be done. So, it's still the plan for sea level rise is to be provided by that. More to come when the Corps of Engineers has a final revised solution, and we'll get T-PAC and council appraised when that happens. Just now, our closing for the session, hopefully was not too bad after two and a half hours, but just a few thoughts at the end. The CIP, we think, and we want to believe that is an efficient, cost-effective, industry-recognized program that we are delivering, the critical infrastructure that we were asked to do. We have sufficient capacity to support San Jose, so that's something that is important for us to keep in mind. And also, we are, we are very committed to the health of the bay. So, working with the board and doing whatever we need to do, but we believe that we have been a factor on keeping the bay healthy, and we want to continue to do so. And with that, this is the end of the presentation, and we're happy to take your questions.
Awesome. For the record, it was only an hour forty-five. I'm not sure we made, would have made it two and a half, but we, we learned a lot. That was a great presentation. Thank you, and thank you for the work you do. You know, your expertise and professionalism is something we really appreciate, and you just do such vital work. So, thank you for all the context, and for everybody who took the tour, as I got to do a couple of years ago. It's just incredibly impressive to go out and see the facilities, so again, encourage folks to do that. We're going to transition now to council questions, any feedback discussion, and then we'll open it up for public comment before we adjourn. So, let me turn to my screen here. Okay, and we will start with Councilmember Kamai.
Thank you so much, and I have a lot to say, but I'm going to squeeze it all in. First of all, I want to say thank you, and I want to thank the staff, the consultants, for everything you do, because if you didn't do it, we would be in big trouble. And, you know, I experienced when I lived in Morgan Hill, when Gilroy Morgan Hill did not have enough capacity and the sewer was coming up through the streets, it was horrible. It was really, really horrible, all the contamination and everything. So, what you do and how you do it, and, you know, just the genius of the engineering is phenomenal. It really, really is. I always am, I haven't been involved in it for a while, but this is great. This is really great. So, thank you, thank you to everyone who is involved in this. You mentioned the sea level rise. It is coming. And one of the things that we know is that if we're not persistent on the shoreline levy project, we know that people forget. So, anything that I can do, we can do. We have to poll our congressional representatives to this to say, hey, you know, it takes forever. So, things happen in geologic times. So, you can't like not push on this levy project because that is what's going to protect the treatment plant. So, please, use us in that. And having dealt with the Corps of Engineers, it is slow-going. So, please be persistent. I'm really delighted to see your transition of, from consultants to city staff, you know, over the years. I think that being at eighty percent really says a lot, and the expertise that we have in-house. So, thank you for that. I'm really delighted about that. I like the, I like your CIP monthly reporting. I will, even though I'm not on the committee, I will take a look at that. I like your guiding principles. I am going to take that to other committees that I'm on and see how they line up with your guiding principles, because I think that they really speak to how project management needs to happen. So, thank you for that. The gap projects, I was just curious, how many and what's the approach to address it? I'm just wondering if it's a little deal, a medium deal, or a big deal?
So, it's a combination. I mean, some of those are things that just happen to be more urgent, like, I mean, they may be small projects, but we just have to address it, and they were not included as part of the large projects. So, for example, give you an example, we have now a switchgear, like an electrical switchgear, that maybe is a $10 million project, that it was supposed to happen later, but we need to kind of fast-forward it a little bit. Another example, when we find, like we mentioned, when we show the bypass picture, we found a structure that was structurally compromised that we will have to repair earlier. So, in general, there is relatively smaller projects. They just happen that it's either a matter of safety or just an urgency in the infrastructure repair. But for the most part, it's not significant, like it's a little bit in the bucket. I mean, it's not large projects at this point.
Okay, thank you for that. On the 100 MGD flow and you can't stop it, thank you for being creative. I think that many people do not realize, you know, they just flush the toilet and away it goes, and goodbye. So, thank you, thank you for addressing that. On the regulatory front, I'm just wondering, because of global warming effects, I was wondering if temperature had anything to do with it as well, because I do know that, yes, it's nutrient, but it's also warmer temperatures cause the blooms to grow faster. So...
Thank you, council member. That's a great question. Yes, we are, there are some sophisticated models that are being developed that are, that are pretty mature right now, that are looking at those types of effects, and does temperature or does clearing water with less sediment being delivered to the bay, does that change the bay's resistance and resiliency to nitrogen? And, and yes, temperature is a driving factor, both with respect to how nitrogen might be taken up and utilized by algae, but also it affects the dissolved oxygen levels as well directly. So, so yes, the regulations will likely shift as climate change impacts the environment as well.
Yeah, I think that, you know, as we start thinking about not just chemically but, or nutrients, you know, what other ways in which we can address some of these issues? I know that Shasta Dam, they started taking water from the bottom of the dam as opposed to the top of the dam, because they had to release colder water into, into the creeks to keep fishing good condition. So, we may have to like think a little bit differently in terms of utilizing other ways in which to get those nutrients down. So, thank you for that. And then, you know, in terms of land use, Kevin, I'm just, I know that David will take care of everything that happens over there in District Four, but Dick Santos would not forgive me if I didn't bring up communications with the local community, ensuring that every step of the way, we bring in the community, let them know what's going on as we're going through all of this. I mean, I'm assuming yes, but I just bring it up because of my past experiences, right? To ensure that the local community does get informed and, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you, council member. It's a very important point. We are committed to running an open solicitation process, you know, fully in compliance with our Sunshine Ordinance, and bringing along all stakeholders, including the community.
Yeah, but I mean, I think that there's an opportu, there's a lot of work that's done there already, and I know that through the regular processes of, of communication and community meetings and all of that, you already do that. What I'm talking about is ensuring the dialogue, that people are receiving, not that you're just pushing it out, but that people are receiving it, and, you know, there have been a lot of changes in that community of Alviso, and so I just want to make sure that we're, we're having that two-way communication so that as we do whatever it is that we do in the area, that yes, in fact, you know, people know what's going on.
Your point is well-taken, and I share the desire to make sure that we have that open two-way dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Let's go to Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. I just want to say, last week on Friday, having that tour was really reminiscent for me of growing up in the Canaries. It was, you know, big pipes and, you know, structural steel and smell. It was really cool to have that experience and, you know, sort of really saw the value of what, what we're doing down there. So, and I look forward to now serving on T-PAC, and so we'll have more time to answer some questions. So, I just have a couple that are sort of interesting to me, and maybe Kevin and Mariana, you can sort of divvy this one up. But now that with the dewatering, that essentially frees up the 750 acres currently used as drying beds. What is the, is there any future use for that? Is it, is it now committed to environmental conservancy? Is there any utility for that 750 acres? Kind of what's the timeline? What do we have to do to get what's existing on there off of it? Can you comment on that a bit?
Yeah, there is still some time that those acres will be used, so we have mentioned that there is still the transition that needs to happen. So, from the time that we start dewatering, we still have probably four to five years that we will still be using some of that. That is part of the operational area currently. There is still not a set kind of finalized decision of what will be used, when it will become available. There is a small portion of that that we are considering as a second step for our biosolids treatment. We are considering potentially an extra biosolids treatment facility there. That will be only like 10, 15 acres. So, there is still the positive, the possibility to have those acres used for something else. But right now, it's still from master plan, it's still just part of the operational area. There is yet to be decided a final use for that area.
And will that be contemplated in your next planning strategy?
We are considering that, because we need to kind of figure out also, once that we have the five years passed and we have that available, we will have to start maintaining that land. So, one of the challenges is that we don't want it to become habitat, because then it becomes protected and there are other issues with that. So, we will need to figure out, because we will have to actively manage those acres so they can be available. So, we, that is part of our planning process for the next five years.
Great, thanks for that. Kapil, you talked about your process, the kind of drilling in on the third-party cost to the value engineering piece. Is your value engineering a matter of course, or only if you've got a design phase, analysis, budget buster, that you then turn to value engineering?
No, we don't do it for every single project. I did mention that, you know, a lot of things don't go as planned, but a lot of things do, and we have successful design and delivery and budgeting of projects. But if certain projects do enter into a certain percentage amount that's greater than the budget, then we'll go ahead and implement a VE session on it.
But just, just to add to that, I mean, we, we have kind of tried to do it if there is more of a cost concern. However, value engineering is an established practice for a lot of projects because of the size, and I think at the beginning of the program, we did it more often. Because of the size of certain projects, we were considering implementing it just as like a regular practice, just to have like a second eye looking at it. However, as we, that was for the really large projects. As we have moved to the non-traditional delivery, more into the design, the design, I just, the design build, I just blanked out for a second, but that process actually has kind of like a value engineering component integrated to it. So, for our three largest projects, that has been the watering, that is like 140 million, like Headworks and Coogen, that was 70 million, there was kind of like an informal VE process on those. But for the large, traditional projects, we only are implementing VE if they, there is like a triggering concern with the cost, that we have to start making a scope change decision.
Thank you. I'll yield my time, because I'll be on T-PAC. I can ask more then. Thank you.
You're going to have a lot of time to learn. There we go. Awesome. Thank you, Councilmember Mulcahy. Let's go to Councilmember Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for, for keeping our bay clean and looking at the future of expansion and as our population rise. I would hope we get more of this education for our residents out there, because I would say 98% of them don't know or don't care for that matter, but it's an extremely important process that we have to go through. As a retired fire captain, I've kind of got a little bit concerned about the amount of chemicals that we have out there. What is your, what is the approximately, I think it's come in a railcar with a big 40,000-gallon tank or, and then what are the safety measures that you guys doing to, just in case there's a leak?
Happy to say that we don't use the railcars anymore. That was the chlorine gas that used to come, and that was highly toxic. So, a few years ago, we changed, and this infection is now provided with sodium hypochlorite. So, it's just a liquid, it's like chlor, it's like bleach, like a concentrated form. So, it is still a toxic material, but it's not as toxic as the chlorine gas used to be. However, all our chemical stations are provided with all sorts of sensors for spills, they are provided with sumps to contain chemical spills if necessary. Our staff is trained on how to respond to all the emergencies in case that is necessary. We have several chemicals inside, not sodium, sodium hypochlorite is just one of them. We have ferrochloride that is also toxic. Our staff is trained on how to do it, and we are actually in the process of updating some of our safety procedures and having people retrained, but we don't use the chlorine gas anymore.
Okay, and you, do you coordinate with, you know, our hazmat team right there off of Zanker and on Innovation Way? So, that way, when they pre-plan and respond to a particular spill or leak or even confined space, so they can be prepared?
We are working with the fire department. Actually, we had an episode last year, we have an emergency with some leak of ammonia. So, they responded to that, and I'm working with them just to kind of try to have that communication more consistent, because for a while, I think it was, it was not there. But we, we are working with them, and again, that's part of the retraining that we're doing right now with the staff, and it's one of our focuses right now for our safety program.
Well, thank you, and, you know, I knew to be on the hazmat team, and we appreciate that, you know, you allow us to go in there in the facility and understand what it is that we need to do. The other question for you on the headway, with all the solid waste that comes out of there, beside going to landfill, is there... there, beside going to landfill, is there a plan to somewhere down in the future that we can use that solid waste as fuel to, you know, heat the water that can help the biological bacteria to reduce the, the amount of nitrogen?
We already, so two different things. The, the solid waste kind of goes into two different ways. Goes into the digesters, and some of it is transforming to biogas. And that is the biogas that we are already using, all of it, and it's a combined heat and power what we have there. So, our system produces electricity and at the same time produces heat. So, we have a heat-water loop actually that is used to heat our digesters currently. So, all our digestion biological process is supported by the heat produced by the cogent that takes all the biogas. Our solids that come from that process are the ones that are going to the landfill, but we're in the process of changing that with our dewatering facility. And those solids are now going to be taken either for composting, land application, or fertilizer production. So, that will further increase the reuse of the solids that we have.
Thank you. And as nitrogen is, is a kind of toxic for our fish and, and our environment out there, is there a new process or look in the future how to deal with the nitrogen output as our population increase?
That's what we were talking about, that that will require like higher, more specialized treatment process in the kind of biological side. In terms of like the effluent going to the bay, we, after we, we obviously go through the whole process of disinfection, but also there is a last process in the, in the, the treatment that takes away any chlorine residual, and the ammonia is at a level that is not toxic for fish. So, toxicity is a big part of the compliance that we have to, to go through. So, all that is, is on, and, and we are certain, and Eric can help me out here, but we're certain that our effluent is not toxic.
Yeah, our effluent is tested once a month for just general toxicity, not specific to any particular contaminant. And we have a very, very good, very consistent compliance record with that toxicity testing.
All right, well, thank you so much, and thank you for the good work.
Thanks, councilmember. Let's turn to Councilmember Cohen.
Well, thank you for the thorough overview. I think it was helpful to see all this information in one place, and I know some of, I, I've seen it a few times, but it's great for many of my colleagues who probably haven't been exposed to it as much. But the, the, this treatment plant and the environment around it, facilities around it, is one of the things that makes being District Four councilmember so exciting because there's a lot happening up there and there's a lot to be engaged in, whether it's the levee projects or the Microsoft project or all of the land that will be used for other manufacturing. Obviously, the projects taking, the things that we're working on right now are going to change the long-term outlook and value of that area. And I'm very excited about the potential uses of the drying beds, as Councilmember Mulcahy asked. I am interested in, you know, certainly in the, in the conversations about uses, whether there's recreation trails, some solar fields, there's a lot of potential uses there that we, we need to keep our, keep thinking about. I, I really would want to first thank just the team because, you know, this is a full-circle thing for me. I, I spent my first four years of my professional career working at Clorox with sodium hypochloride in the lab, and obviously love big facilities like this, and, and knowing how complicated the operation of these facilities is, it's even more impressive that you've done these, this one billion dollars of improvement projects while continually keeping the plant running twenty-four hours a day, every day of the year. And, and it's not, it's not this, that should not be overlooked and brushed aside as, as something normal because most facilities wouldn't be able to continue operating and do major projects like this at the same time. So, I just want to thank you for, for the, for the amazing work over the years. And I, I do have one question that kind of came up when I was touring the new dewatering facility a few weeks ago. We're relying not just on power and a lot of other things to keep this plant operating, but this facility, and I know even currently, but this facility particularly will require on a certain amount of truck traffic, picking up the solid waste. I remember the number was something like, I forget, eight to twenty, I forget, twenty trucks a day or something, running through and coming out. It occurred to me while I was there that there are potential disruptions to truck service that could happen in an emergency, in the event of a strike, in the event of, of an earthquake where roads are impassable. And I know that there's some capacity buffer built in to try to account for that, but can you talk a little bit about what our limits are in case of a stoppage and truckage access to the site for some period of time?
There is, actually, we have two different points in the system that can do hold biosolids. One is in the dry side. So, we have those large light bottom bins that you saw in the tour. Those can hold, but also we have capacity in the kind of like operational liquid side of the facility. So, our planning includes at least three to five days of capacity that either as a combination or, or in one side, we could go without having to truck it out. So, we are expecting that anything will, will, five days will be sufficient to kind of fix whatever we need to do.
And I guess it's a pretty rare possibility that a stoppage could go more than five days, although I can certainly imagine scenarios where that would happen.
Yeah, and honestly, if we are in that situation, we have worse problems than the biosolids. So, we, we will have to be thinking really hard what we're doing there.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. It's just always something to be considering when we're making these plans. But thank you so much. Obviously, this is, like I said, this is an exciting thing for District Four and for the city to have such an amazing facility here. Never in my wildest imagination, when I started this job, did I think I'd be speaking at a wastewater treatment plant professional conference as I am next week. So, you never know what you're going to get out of this job. So, thank you so much.
That is so true. Let's go over to Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. I unfortunately missed the tour last week, but I look forward to the next opportunity. And the robust presentation that you all provided today really helped me get a strong foundation in my understanding of the work that you all do. So, thank you for that. My question is related to funding. Has the California Cap and Trade Program been explored as an opportunity for financing? And if so, what are the obstacles that we face for participating?
I, and I'm going to show my ignorance here, Jeff, if you know better.
I can take that, yeah. It's a great question, councilmembers. So, the cap and trade program, you know, is certainly something that we could look at. There are a lot of uses for that program. I was just up in Sacramento this week, and people are thinking about bill credits on other utility bills to use for that program to lower electricity costs, but it's certainly something on the table that we can explore. And we definitely want to partner with all of you as we, you know, get into the cost of this capital plan and how we can, you know, get more state and federal funding for these projects.
Thank you. One of my assignments is the SJSC Clean Water Financing Authority, so hope to be a collaborator with you all in these conversations. Thank you.
Great, thank you, councilmember. Let's see any other hands. I had one very small question, which was around water conservation technologies. First of all, let me just say, the, the water purification, all the work we're doing around water recycling is just amazing, and that is also, if that's not on the tour, that's also worth seeing. But specifically, was curious where we are in terms of just basic technologies like, I don't know, lower-flow showerheads, toilets, et cetera. Some folks have older fifty, sixty-year-old homes or older. Where are we in terms of the potential of conservation? Obviously, you need a certain amount of water going through the system every day regardless, but how much more of a lever is that at this point? Or is that technology kind of pretty much adopted enough that there's not a whole lot more to gain there?
Thank you, Mayor, and very timely for later council discussions this year. The indoor devices, there, there are still some potential to install hard technology like showerheads and, and new toilets, but we pretty much over the past thirty-some-one years kind of maxed out that potential. The, the next phase of that into reducing water usage at a household level is to install automated metering infrastructure. It's like a smart meter with an, an app or webpage where people can get alerts every day on what their water usage is. And that, those tools, both, both the alerts and the communication, leak alerts to customers and the, the service, the customer service portfolio that it, it can provide to our, our residents and businesses, that will also be a useful tool in creating awareness on water usage and, and bringing it down. And there, there is some potential still, we are still, we're at a, you know, we're pretty much at a low, drought low still, a little bit of an increase this year, about four percent so far, but we're floating around the, the bottom of water usage over the past fifty years. And that will, and we still have more potential to go further. Our, it looks like our, with the state mandates, we'll be doing another five to ten percent decrease in residential water usage, and there's probably another ten percent that could drop off on outside irrigation. So, we, we still have room to drop further.
Right, and the, the lawn conversions, as, as important as those are, that doesn't actually hit the sanitary system, right? Doesn't that go out through the sewer system, or am I getting, am I getting that wrong?
A lot of it is focused on outdoor irrigation, but there is indoor. The state laws on indoor water usage need to drop from where we are right now throughout San Jose, about fifty-five gallons per day per person, to drop somewhere down to the low forties by the year 2035.
That's for just the indoor component?
Indoor, yes.
Interesting. And what's our top theory for that? Is that appliances that are more water-efficient and better monitoring of leaks and some of the things you were just describing? Is there anything else there we should be aware of?
Leaks and general awareness. We still use a lot of water. It may not seem like it for a lot of residents, but we use, just our culture here, we use a lot of water indoors and general awareness and use behavior change.
Yeah, I'm always yelling at my kids about the shower. I get it. Like, like any grumpy old dad. Okay, thank you, Jeff, appreciate it. Great, unless anybody else had anything they thought the council should know, I think we're ready to turn to public comment. This was a great presentation, very informative. Tony, do we have any comment cards?
Patrick?
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council and City Staff. My name is Patrick Quark. I am one of the members of the Tripwire of the T-PAC, representing Cupertino Sanitary District, which is one of the three Tripwire agents. And I appreciate a great presentation from staff. I also happened to tour the plant last Friday. It was an excellent tour, the weather was good, and I was greatly impressed at the, how well the plan has been operated and maintained. And at the level of, given the level of complexity of the treatment plant process, the high-tech and cogeneration that I understand is providing about six, seventy percent of the, of the power or the air necessary to generate the operation of the plant. So, there is a lot of savings, you know, for taxpayer, for taxpayers. And I concur with Councilman Dawn that, you know, the future plan, the master plan, needs to be outraged, a lot of effort going to the different cities or Tripwire agencies and make them engaged about the, the process, you know, and also how ratepayer is being spent. And so that when it comes to the, the agent for tax, for a rate increase, they will fully understand what need to be done. And the plan itself was really impressive because there's a lot of built-in redundancy and reliability in the plan. And given that, appreciated a, a very strong expertise for the plan, especially a great leadership team that bring the capital improvement program going. And my understanding that is, most of those are within budget and on time. And given the complexity of the whole thing in here, it's, it's going to be a really big challenge.
Thank you. Back to council.
Thank you very much. Great, thank you. I know my colleagues are eager, eager to get out of here. I did want to flag one other issue very quickly. We did not spend a lot of time talking about security, cybersecurity, physical threats. I'm hoping at some point, that's something we can also maybe just have an update on how you all are thinking about threat reduction, risk mitigation. Anyway, I just, I think that's something we all want to keep top of mind with all of our, all of our infrastructure. So, I just wanted to flag that. If anybody wants to comment, feel free, but happy to just save that for a, a future item.
We can save it for a future item.
Perfect, okay. Thank you all again, great study session, appreciate it. We are adjourned.